I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor's round?
Here, Assistant Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Councilor Grasso.
Here.
Councilor Brown.
Yeah.
Councilor Heim.
Yep.
Councilor Penelacas.
Here.
Councilor Whitehouse.
Here.
Councilor Marconi.
Here.
Councilor St. Laurent.
Yes.
I'd like to ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silent prayer. And then Councilor Assistant Mayor Hanson will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by God Bless America.
By Pledge of Allegiance, to the side of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, with all its strength, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America.
Now we're down to a presentation by the Reverend Dawn Shippey of the North Church, and Philip Pettis, who is the Chair of the North Church Cabinet. I'm going to ask if you come right to the podium and speak to the people at home.
Mayor Sorrell, councilors, good evening.
Good evening.
I am the Reverend Dawn Shippey, Senior Pastor of North Congregational Church of Portsmouth, United Church of Christ. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. Since 1712, a building at the heart of Market Square has been a place of worship for the people who are North Church. It is important that we understand the way I use the word "church" in my vocabulary. When you hear me say "church," I am talking about people. People who happen to have a tendency to build places in which to worship. Some of those spaces become architectural and historic treasures. The building currently at Market Square, that one with the famed steeple that everyone wishes white paint would be put back on, even though you should know it was originally brown, was built in 1855. That building is such a treasure. About 10 days ago, that building was the backdrop for the Americor City Year kickoff. For four years now, North Church has simply provided electricity for that event and been the rain sight. This year, since we are currently without a custodian and rather than round up a volunteer, I left my Spiny Road office and came down to open the building. It was, as you remember, Mayor Sorrell, a glorious October day. And since I had to lock up later, I took the opportunity to enjoy being in downtown Portsmouth. And then I stood at the edge of the square and watched that ceremony. It was inspiring. That program speaks to what is best about our nation. But I also was struck by the presence of that building. As enmeshed as I am in the past, present, and future of that building, it was an amazing thing for just a moment to see it from the perspective most people see it, from the outside, since I'm generally on the inside. There is no question in my mind that whether you see it from the inside or the outside, it is a sacred structure. For more than 40 years, North Church has tried to figure out how to support a building that is sacred to the church and to the community. Congregational polity is a little like city politics. Everything takes time. The church has been encouraged by and perhaps just a little bit embarrassed by the concern and support shown by the community in recent months. With the membership of just over 300, many of proud New England heritage, North Church has tried to be faithful to its mission in Portsmouth. For almost as long as I have been here, now going on four years, North Church has again been working on how to do what needs to be done. That said, it is my privilege to invite Phil Pettis, the Chairperson of the North Church Cabinet, to tell you how far we have come.
Thanks, Dawn. Thanks, Mayor Sorrell, and thank you, members of the City Council. My name's Phil Pettis. I'm the Chairman of the North Church Cabinet, the governing body of the church, and I'm also a resident of Portsmouth, 85 Leslie Drive. I'm privileged to be here tonight to give you a brief update on what the North Church has done with regard to its facilities downtown. I'm privileged not only because my parents were married in the building down in Market Square, and my siblings and myself were baptized there, and that I was married there, and hopefully someday my kids will be baptized in that building, but I'm also privileged because I'm a longtime member of this community, and I know what that building means to Portsmouth, to the city, and to the residents of this Portsmouth and greater community. Our congregation and our cabinet is well aware that every decision we make impacts this city, and every decision we make about that building impacts this community. That is not lost on us, and our 300-plus members within that church community understand that. We have worked hard in the past couple of years, and we're excited about the progress we've made to date and about our accomplishments. As far as a brief summary of what those accomplishments are, we hired back in July of 99 an engineer who gave us a report explaining the necessary work to be done to that facility downtown. And in today's figures, the amount of work that needs to be done down there estimates a total of about $2 million. That number was a lot harder to read when it first came out, but I've said it so many times, it seems a lot easier. Since that report, since 1999, we've had numerous internal studies within our congregation to determine what our membership's needs are, what the city's needs are, and what this community's needs are, and how that all relates to the use of that facility. Our cabinet has presented a preliminary recommendation with a number of parts, which include continuing to research restoring that building, repairing that building, and maintaining a commitment to preserving our structures as they stand. In May of 2003, to bring it up to speed, the membership authorized the cabinet to hire a financial consultant to determine the feasibility of raising $2 million to repair that building. The cabinet took that authorization and interviewed a number of consultants, and eventually hired Vanderweiden Capital Development Consultants Incorporated, an outfit out of Amherst, Ohio, with a long track record of working with churches of all denominations to do feasibility studies and raise money for capital campaigns. Vanderweiden has done a very cursory review thus far of our financial situation in the present, and has determined that this church cannot raise those kinds of money alone, and that we do need community support to do this. That brings us to where we are today and what lies ahead. Vanderweiden has asked us to identify a number of influential members of this community. The Vanderweiden firm wants to conduct confidential interviews of those members of the community to determine those individuals' participation in the community, what their feelings are about the Market Square building, and what their awareness of and willingness to support the project is. Those individuals are being contacted today, this week. We're in contact with them via mail and telephone, and the challenge is really limiting that list to approximately 30 people, because there are more than that in this community that we'd like to reach out to. Interviews of those members of our community will happen within the next month, by the end of November 2004. They should be complete, and Vanderweiden should have prepared for us around the first of the year a comprehensive financial feasibility study report that will tell us what is needed to generate the kind of money to repair that building. After that report, the membership will go back, will look at it, and ultimately, we will need to have a vote within, again, taking into consideration the needs of this city and this community. Just in conclusion, I would just want to reiterate why we're here tonight, and that is, the North Church building downtown means a lot to the city, a lot to this community, and it's important for us to update you as we go, so that you're informed and so that the community is informed. And also, in that effort, we are opening the doors to the Market Square building this week on Wednesday night at 6:00. We are having what we're calling a Portsmouth Listening Session, to have a listening session from the community, where the community members can come in, they can ask questions of our membership, of our cabinet, and find out what we're doing, and we can also ask questions of the community to find out what their needs are, what do they foresee happening with the building in the future, and getting some input from our community. That listening session, again, is Wednesday, the 22nd, at 6:00 PM. I'd welcome all of you to attend, and any other members of the community who would like to be there, we'd obviously welcome you to be there. I should note that the meeting Wednesday night will be moderated by Karen Brown, the former WMUR correspondent, news correspondent, and we think it'll be a big success. At this point, I'd entertain any questions for myself or for Dawn.
Any questions of the council? I'd just like to state that here and now, we've all got to work together to save that church for one main reason. The steeple is our guiding light for Portsmouth, and that's how it's always been. So hopefully, we can all work together on this, come together, and succeed.
We look forward to working with you, Mayor Sorrell, and the council, and the rest of the community on this effort.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Yes, Evelyn. Could you tell me if anybody wanted to make a donation, where they would direct the donation?
At this point, donations can be made to the North Church, we call it the Steeple Fund. We are encouraging members of the community to hold on to their checks until our feasibility study is done.
Okay.
And we'll have a better sense of our finances and where those monies should be directed.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming. We're down to the proclamation, and the Assistant Mayor is going to read it. It's "Trick or Treating for UNICEF Day, October 30, 2003."
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Council Chambers, City Hall, Portsmouth, New Hampshire, proclamation. Whereas "Trick or Treat for UNICEF" began in Philadelphia in 1950, one of youth groups collected $17 in the decorated milk cartons on Halloween to help children overseas. And whereas, since that time, the children of Portsmouth and the rest of the United States have collected more than $115 million by going door-to-door with U.S. Fund for UNICEF trademark orange collection boxes on Halloween. And whereas fundraising efforts like "Trick or Treating for UNICEF" have helped 80% of the world's children become immunized against six deadliest disease, saving 3 million lives annually, making way for 2/3 of the world's children who have now completed primary school. And whereas "Trick or Treating for UNICEF" program provides our youth with the opportunity to perform selfless deeds and learn about their peers in developing world, while also raising funds and improve lives. Now therefore, I, Evelyn Sorrell, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, hereby proclaim October 30, 2003, to be "Trick or Treating for UNICEF Day" in Portsmouth, and urge all citizens of Portsmouth to recognize this event and participate fittingly with its observance through their generous contribution to this worthy cause. Given in my hand and seal, the City of Portsmouth on this 20th day of October 2003. Evelyn Sorrell, Mayor.
Thank you, Alex. Is Liz Roy here to accept the proclamation? If you'd like to say a few words at the podium, you're welcome. Okay. All right, there you are. Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor Sorrell and the council. Sorry, I'm just getting over the flu. I don't usually sound like this. Thank you for the presentation and the proclamation of "Trick or Treat for UNICEF." It's an American tradition that saves children's lives and educates the children in Portsmouth every year about overseas. Because of the work of UNICEF, almost 7 million lives are saved every year. We're immunized, almost 80% of the children, as the Assistant Mayor mentioned in the proclamation. And my favorite thing on getting children in Portsmouth to "Trick or Treat for UNICEF" is because of the area of education. 120 million children are not in school today, and they're not home with mom and playing Nintendo. They're child soldiers, child laborers. They can't get to school because it's unsafe. And UNICEF is making it safe for all children to go to school, and equalize girls' and boys' access. So thank you very much for the proclamation, for supporting UNICEF, and I hope you have a great Halloween next week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we are down to the Mayor's Award. This Mayor's Award is going to John Tabor and Jim Nukas, who worked very, very hard to help the city here with Portsmouth Listens. I'm going to have them come forward and say a few words, and also come up and receive your Mayor's Awards and your gifts, but I definitely want you to tell the people at home what you've been doing. Thank you, both of you. You were great for doing all of that work. You're great, huh, John?
So Jim, we've got to tell the people at home what we've been up to.
Okay. Go ahead.
We've really, hundreds of people have been involved in this, as you know. We got study circles together to talk about the future of the city and give input into the next master plan. It's been a real exciting process for us to be part of, just as citizens. And a couple of quick thank-yous, first to Peter Hamlin for a quality-of-life discussion that picked up steam about a year and a half ago, and then to the City Manager, John Bohenko, for saying, "That might work with the master plan." And then to Cindy Hayden and Dave Holden, and Ken Smith, and the Planning Department, and the Planning Board, and their support, and all our facilitators, and all our volunteers who walk door-to-door to get out leaflets to get support for the study circles, and all our participants who gave all the thinking that we hope will be part of the master plan someday.
I think it's important to note that one of the interesting things that was learned along the way is we got to see how many wonderful things this city has already engaged in, and create an opportunity whereby we can work with the city and make those things even better. A lot of people were surprised to see how progressive the city has already been in several areas, such as public transportation and moving the Riverwalk forward, and we look to continue to help in Phase 3, in reviewing the master plan, and helping with the final plan that gets drafted. We have two final thank-yous that we would like to extend tonight for the most valuable players on our team. Our spouses are here tonight, Betsy Tabor and my wife, Mary Nukas. Betsy worked with us as a facilitator, as well as managing the Tabor family in John's absence, and my wife continued her volunteer school activities, as well as managing my family in my absence, so we greatly appreciate them as well. And we'd like to thank you for the opportunity, and we look forward to Phase 3. Thank you.
I want to thank both of you. You were just wonderful. Any questions, either of the gentlemen? Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Now we're down to the acceptance of the minutes of October 6, 2003. Second? All opposed?
Aye.
All opposed. We're down to the public comment session. I'm quite sure you all know the rules. It's three minutes, a speaker, and tonight, we have five speakers, and when the city attorney puts up that little "thank you" sign, then you've used your three minutes. The first one is Mr. Eckert, and he's going to speak on the Federal Building and the Library.
Yeah. Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Mrs. Sorrell, don't you think that the Federal Building would be a great place for the library? Elevators accessible, sprinkled for the fire department, all kinds of parking, brick building, and guess what? Right in the middle of town, where everybody wants it. You know, all the hundreds of thousands we could save could be put to use on streets, sewers, water lines. You know, maybe some of that money could be put to that steeple that you're talking about. I made a mistake. Probably saved millions of dollars, wouldn't we? Right? Not thousands, millions. No, the Federal Building is hazardous. Isn't it? That's what's been said, it's been hazardous. The feds are going to give it to us for nothing. Of course, they're going to sell it to us, I understand. Now they're going to give it to us, want to give it to us, but they don't. The reason they want to give it to us is because they don't want any ramifications of what might be wrong with the building. However, if there's something wrong with the building, I would think that as Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, if there's a hazard there, it's a safety thing, that the people should be told, and there shouldn't be anybody going in and out of that building. Now, if it's not a hazard, if it's not a safety thing, then I don't see why the city can't take that building over and make a library out of it. And even if there is some asbestos in it, I don't see why that stuff can't be taken out of it. It's inert unless you disturb it. And that comes from a very good engineer, my wife. She was an engineer for AT&amp;T, Lucid Technologies, and the Gears. And we had a real good discussion on asbestos. There's nothing wrong with it unless you disturb it. Now, the old City Hall, the old police station, all public works, all Molly Button buildings, all rehab. Frank Jones Building rehab. And how about this fallen-down brick building right over here? You're rehabbing that one. Mrs. Reese's brother, Mr. Buddy Reese, is rehabbing this building right now, so she must like brick buildings. I don't lie, cheat, or steal. So all you people out there, I would never, ever, ever say, "Don't vote for some of you people up there." I would never do that. But you know who I wouldn't vote for? And you know who I would vote for? It's a shame that you're leaving, Mrs. Marconi. I think you were a wonderful person on the City Council. I do. My sons both love you. Mr. Vonn, I think it's sad that you're leaving the City Council, because you're a saving grace, you're a new person on this council. Your other people are nice, but you're going along with the old clique. And Mr. Bohenko, you're a smart man, and I like you, up to a point. You moved into this city, you've got a good job, you came here, you must have liked what we have here. You like the brick buildings, you like the old streets, you like the way it is here. I am. Mr. Vonn, he's a carpetbagger. He came here, he liked it, he stayed here. A lot of us stayed here. So why tear the city down? Why tear it down?
Penelacas, I told you once before, we do not talk personalities there. You tell us your concerns, but don't talk personalities.
I've said that I like John.
I just said.
I said I like him, not dislike him.
You're 30 minutes, you're 3 minutes.
I know, my 3 minutes are up.
The next speaker is Charles Vaughn, issue NHSP 45.
Thank you, Mayor Sorrell, and honorable members of the City Council. I want to thank you all for your wonderful service the last two years. Mrs. Marconi and Brad Lown, I'm sorry to see you go. You've served the city well and ably, and, you know, may your future endeavors be successful. My wife suggested tonight that I talk in a calm, and don't look angry, when I speak before you folks. I'll do my best. But as you know, the veterans are dying like swatted flies, about 1,500 a day of the Korean and World War II conflict, and of course, the Vietnamese veterans are also getting older. So on Senate Bill 45, which you're going to vote on, I suspect after the election, November 20th of the next election, I don't blame you for passing it on to the next meeting after the election. But I would strongly recommend that you start with a premise, and the premise is that all veterans, regardless of their disability, would get somewheres from, of the suggestion made in Senate Bill 45, from $51 to $500, that somewheres in the neighborhood of $200 to $300 per veteran. I think that the disability, those that have 100%, of course, are $1,400, so I don't think that they're too much, not that they're not a concern, but I think that the playing field should be leveled, to start with all veterans, who currently, as I understand it, and clarified in the question that I had for Mr. Bohenko, of $100. So that would make $200 to $300. That would assist each veteran who is elderly, who has to struggle for their medication and so on, to be rewarded to some extent for their service, and for their heroism under difficult circumstances. I was told that there's no free lunch. I recognize that, but you have to remember that a lot of these veterans never had lunch, especially during combat. They had no breakfast, and certainly didn't have a hot supper. So I think these have to be considered, when you consider this on November 20th. I understand that Mr. Bohenko, and I have his handout. his handout, uh, that was given to me very courteously by Assistant Mayor Hanson. I've talked to Harold Whitehouse, I've talked to Mrs. Panthalakis. I've mentioned this to John Heinz. I want to thank you, John, for welcoming into your home and why we discussed this. So, uh, give it that serious thought, from two to three hundred dollars for all veterans. And as Sully just said, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Uh, the next speaker is Barbara Newton, and she's going to speak regarding the Players'
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Unlike many of my associates at the Players' Ring, I very seldom get up and talk in front of people. But I wanted to address you on the occasion of the lease extension. We are now going into, we are now in our 12th season at the Players' Ring. Some of you may be familiar with the venue. Our mission in establishing the theater was to provide a venue for local talent and for original work by local artists. We have done that repeatedly over the years and continue to extend our, um, our house to anyone who wants to perform there. We feel as if we have contributed greatly to the arts in this area and certainly to the local economy. People going out to the theater often spend their money elsewhere before or after a performance. During the past year, we have also upgraded the building. We had to do considerable rewiring, in fact, complete rewiring of the building, which has been completed, and as well as other upgrades for the safety of the public. I want to thank everyone for their support. I look forward to seeing you at the Players' Ring. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker is Susan Solomon. I hope I pronounced that right. And she has just started working on the Maple Haven Playground, and I think we talked a week ago last Friday, and I think she's gonna be the new one coming on board on the neighborhoods. Uh, Susan, why don't you say a few words, and then I know you're gonna present us with the check.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Sorrell and council members. My name is Susan Solomon, and I'm the president of the Maple Haven Neighborhood Association. And on October 11th, we had our first fundraiser, which was yard sale, and we raised over seven hundred thirty dollars. And so tonight, we're just presenting one of hopefully many checks to the city and help support the funding of the playground.
Thank you very much, Susan. That's the one. You see who gets the check, don't you? He's got his hand right there. Thank you, Susan. That ends the public comment session. Um, I'm gonna pass this to your assistant, yes?
Madam Mayor, move to suspend the rules to take up item 11A. 11, um, A is the request, it's A1, request of the school board for approval of the tentative agreement between the school board and the school clericals.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Want me to make the motion?
Yes.
I am move to approve the tentative five-year agreement between the Portsmouth School Board and the cler, school clericals.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What?
Roll call.
Roll call? Roll call. Assistant Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Councilor Grasso?
Yes.
Councilor Laun?
Yes.
Councilor Heinz?
Yes.
Councilor Penalakis?
Yes.
Councilor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Councilor Marconi?
Yes.
Councilor St. Laurent?
Yes.
Mayor Sorrell?
Yes.
Unanimous? Unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, now we're down to the public hearing. It's, uh, notice hereby given, ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 3, Section 7, Period 336, One Way Street. Do you wanna speak on this, Alex?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor. We've been working with the neighborhood, and by making some parking changes and no parking zones, uh, this street that was two-way for many, many years and was changed to one-way, we're now able to go back to a two-way street at the request of the neighborhood. And that's what this, uh, public hearing is about, and this is what the ordinance change does.
And it's Chief Street?
Chief Street.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. We'll open up the public hearing, uh, first time around, um, far or against or simply to the issue. Do I have any speakers? Please come forward to the podium. Just state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mayor Sorrell. My name is Erica Dodge. Um, I have property that bought the Chief Street, and I have been involved with this issue and can say that this is virtually unanimous request from the residents on Chief Street, and there is not one person that I know of who's opposed. This will work for life safety and just anyone who chooses to use that street. It will be an improvement to have it two-way with the parking changes that have been proposed.
Thank you very much, you're welcome. Do I have any other speakers for first time around? Second time around, do I have any speakers? Third and final time before I close the public hearing, do I have any speakers? Close. Now we're down to the approval of grants and donations. Uh, the first one is Homeland Security Grant for an update of the emergency operations for twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars. Maybe you would like to basket these. I think the chief is going to come forward and speak to them. So, uh, we'll, let me just, uh, let me mention the next one, and then Chief, you discuss it. Homeland Security Grant, Round 1 for forty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-three, seventy-three, and Round 2, uh, forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We're here to address the, uh, security grants that we have been awarded. The first one, twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars, is to update the city's emergency plan and develop an all hazards operational plan that will target specific hazards and emergency support functions. This will include annexes that address hazardous materials, terrorism, and geological incidents. We will be, that funds will be used to hire a consultant and for research fees. Uh, on the Homeland Security Grants, Round 1 was five point seven million dollars from the federal government to the state of New Hampshire, which was then distributed based on a population formula. The city of Portsmouth was granted forty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. On Round 2, fifteen point seven million dollars, the city of Portsmouth was granted forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars, which represented a two percent increase over Round 1. These funds are granted to the city in the form of a store credit. We may purchase equipment for terrorism response through Fisher Scientific's online Quartermaster program. We may purchase equipment from other sources and then apply for reimbursement from the state of New Hampshire Department of Safety. And that equipment must be on the approved equipment list, which I believe you have a copy of in your packets. Today, we have designated forty-two thousand dollars for mobile command post and up to ten thousand dollars for crowd control barriers for Department of Public Works. We are developing an needed equipment list to apply for the remaining forty-four thousand, forty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-three cents that we have to spend out of the O3 allocation. We are currently completing the new Homeland Security Assessment for the state of New Hampshire that will determine how much Homeland Security money is allocated to the state for next year.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, we'll put a motion on the floor and then get a second. And Chief, don't go far in case there's some questions. Somebody wanna do the motion, Brad?
I move to accept.
Ask them.
Yes, I move to accept both grants awarded to the city from the state of New Hampshire Department of Safety.
Second.
All right. Question of the chief. Uh, Councilor Pandalakis?
Yes. Uh, Chief, is this just for the city of Portsmouth, or does this include area towns like the, um, um, our mutual agreements?
Uh, in your packets, there was a distribution list of all the area towns and how much money they received. This is just for the city of Portsmouth. Uh, the other towns, based on their population, were given a store credit as well.
I, I realize that, but I'm just wondering if some of these units aren't being set up for mutual aid? Or just they're all gonna be different?
The only grant that I know was allocated that covers mutual aid agreements was the grant that was awarded to the Seco's Technical Assistance Response Team, Hazardous Materials Team. They also received a grant for equipment. So our equipment, our numbers strictly stay in the city, don't, they don't fund anything else.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilor St. Laurent?
Yes, thank you, Ron. Questions? One to the motion. Are you saying on the motion, Councilor Laun, that you're going for the first one, which is A, accepting the emergency operation plan, and on the second one, it's Round 1 and 2? So, so all three amounts are included?
Yes, that's, that's what I got.
I wasn't sure of that. Uh, my other question to the chief is, is this gonna be, is there possibly more hiring or personnel into this program, or is it just for equipment or training?
Um, this is strictly for equipment. There, we're hoping in future years that they address the needs for training and personnel, but to date, they have not done that.
Uh, the problem I have with taking in grants is, you know, we get it for a couple of years, and then the city gets, you know, in hiring people, we get stuck with it for the duration, and we think, we can't delay these people off, or get rid of them. So I'm, I'm a little nervous with grants, but this one seems to be, if it's just for equipment and training, it seems to be mine, I, I would go along with the moment.
I know the type of grant you're referring to, and to date, that has not been addressed, although we have raised concerns for training and personnel. Um, and they have taken the extra money in Round 2 and allocated that toward a state interoperability program for fire and EMS communications. So the plans for personnel and equipment are far in, out years. But it's also important to note that this is a no-match grant. We don't have to put any money out of pocket for this.
Thank you, Chief. I would do best to answer that point. Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Grasso?
Yes, thank you. Um, you answered the question I was anticipating making, which is, will there be successive rounds to this? Um, and...
Yes, currently, under City Manager Bohenko's direction, we were completing the fiscal year O3 assessment, myself along with other city staff. Uh, that has to be handed into the state of New Hampshire by this Friday, and they then compile that based on the state's risk, send it off to the federal government, and then they'll decide how many millions of dollars that we'll get in the following year.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Whitehouse?
Uh, Chief, I noticed in the authorized equipment list, it talks about an explosive device mitigation and remediation equipment for the New Hampshire State Police and Nashua. Uh, now, can you explain what they mean by that equipment?
That is equipment that deals with bomb squads, and currently, the only, uh, those two, Nashua and the State Police, are the only licensed bomb squads in the state. So only those entities can apply for the equipment directly deals with bomb squad tools.
Another question. I, I should think, Chief, with the location of Portsmouth in the vicinity that it is, with this river traffic, with this three bridges, with this naval shipyard, with this P's, Seabrook Nuclear Plant, we should be able to apply for that type of grant and receive a bomb device, a bomb security device in that category?
Uh, nobody has, and as the city manager will tell you, nobody has screamed louder about this in the press than, than I have about getting the proper funding to the, to the hazards that we have in the Portsmouth area. However, I do believe it is smart to keep specialized equipment for specialized teams. Um, some people, most departments have no business having bomb squad tools. It's a very highly specialized field. But yes, we are looking to get the proper funding for the hazards that we have in the area.
So in case of emergency, uh, the New Hampshire State Police could be there, here within minutes, probably?
We have a great working relationship with the State Police and the Bomb Squad. Uh, they do great work for us. They participated in Top Off 2000, they were here training with us. Uh, Andy Parsons is always in the area, we have direct contact with him through our police department. So, so far, it's working good, and I would recommend that those tools stay with the people that know how to use them.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilor Brad Laun, and then the Assistant Mayor?
Uh, yeah, I would just point out, it's been over two years since September 11th of '01, and I'm, uh, I think the federal government should be commended on finally recognizing that the local communities need financial help to deal with what is really a national security issue.
Uh, Councilor, Assistant Mayor?
Chief, I, I just had a question on, um, I've been reading some, uh, reports in the newspaper on the port, and Gino Marconi, are you working with him on, on some funds? Are we collaborating, uh, for getting some information together on some port?
We have, uh, put in this grant, uh, several grants for addressing the security and fire protection at the port. To date, we have been unsuccessful. We're hoping that, uh, with new leadership and the Department of Safety, Office of Emergency Management, and, uh, the next rounds, and hopefully relaxing some of the guidelines that were put on us by the federal government, that we'll be more successful in, in obtaining these funds. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions of, uh, chief? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are we all ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Now we're down to considerations of resolutions and ordinances. First one being, second reading of ordinance, amending Chapter 7, Article 3, Section 7, Period 336, One Way Street. What you wish, Councilor.
Move to pass second reading of the amended ordinance is submitted and scheduled third and final reading November 17th.
Second.
All in, uh, yes, Councilor Laun?
Yeah, I just would say, as H.L. Mencken said, "If, if this is what the neighborhood wants, let's give it to 'em good and hard."
Well, I lived down there for twenty-eight years, and it was, it's badly needed. Um, okay, now, we're, uh, all ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Third and final reading of ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 11, Section 7, Period 1100, speed limits by the addition of Simmons Road, Suzanne Drive, Wallace Road, and Leslie Drive, twenty miles per hour.
Move to pass third and final reading.
Second.
Uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. We're down to presentations and considerations of written communications and petitions. A letter from Attorney Bernie Peelich requesting the re-conveyance of a tract of land located on Edmund Avenue. Uh, John, would you like to just brief that letter?
Uh, Your Honor, this is, this is actually a request that has been resubmitted by Attorney Peelich on behalf of Dr. Bacon. Originally, it was a request that was made that was reported back by the planning board to allow for, to recommend the sale of the property, but that provision be placed, that no structures be put on the land. And, uh, as you can see from Attorney Peelich's letter, he's, uh, appealing that by saying that Dr. Bacon has asked that I make inquiry of you as to whether or not the city would be interested in conveying the land, subject to the condition that no structures be placed upon the property, that, that parking of vehicles be allowed upon the property, or in the alternative, if the city staff insists that the property remain as undeveloped up in space, that the city consider donating the property, selling it for a nominal sum to Dr. Bacon. At this point, what I would recommend to the city council, since the planning board did the original research on this, that if you refer it to the planning board for report back based on this new letter.
Um, you've gotta make the motion, please.
That's what I, oh, you want me to make?
Make the motion.
All right. Okay, Your Honor, to have the matter referred to the planning board for report back to the city council.
Did I get a second?
Second.
Very good. Any other discussion on this? Uh, Councilor Pandalakis?
Yeah, I just thought that we made a decision on this a, a year or so ago, that we weren't going...
It was two thousand and one.
Two thousand and one.
And, if I might, Your Honor?
Yes.
Um, it appears that this request is a little bit different. He does agree that he wants the, he would go with no structures, but he added a little wrinkle on parking, so I think it needs to go to the planning board before the city council would act either way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on this side? We all set for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Now we're down to the city manager, and John has seven items... Aye, all opposed. Now, we're down to the city manager, and John has seven items that require action.
Thank you, Your Honor. First item, the city council took with the suspension of rules regarding the clerical contract, and that's been taken care of. The second item deals with a report back regarding coast trolley services, and that was something that came up at the last meeting regarding a letter from David Morehouse to Mayor Sherrell requesting trolley service at Woodbury Manor. I've given you a comprehensive memorandum back, but as a result of discussions, I think it's important to note that having a work session with the coast, PDA, and others to fully give a presentation regarding the change that have been made would be useful. There have been extreme successes in the changes in the, in the routes. So we've seen doubling of ridership. But I think it's important that we have a work session so that the council can fully understand the dynamics of why the routes were changed, and not only just going with the statistics that prove that the routes are working, but rather to go through and go, and have a comprehensive review of those. So I would suggest that city council have a work session on December 8th at 6:30 PM, and we would invite coast, the director of our Parking and Transportation, John Burke, as well as representatives from the P's Development Authority.
Do I have a motion? Councilor Whitehouse?
Yes, Your Honor, I move that we have this work session on December 8th.
Second.
At 6:30.
All right. Any other discussion on this?
Yes.
We've got, you want to set a date for the work session? Councilor Pandalakis?
He did, December 8th.
Oh, you did?
Yes, I did.
Oh, I didn't knew you. Okay.
I just would like them to bring back some other figures other than tourist times. And this is all we have is June, July, August, and September. Don't we run in the winter?
Right, but, Councilor, and we will bring the updated information, but we've changed the routes as of June. The routes weren't, what you have here is routes, the routes actually changed in June. So we won't have a full year until next year of the routes. But we will bring it up date. So for example, we'll have October and November that we can compare as well.
Okay, thank you.
All ready for the vote then, for the work session? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
One extension, Your Honor.
Very good. Okay, yeah. John, do you want to report on this exemption? And then I'm going to pass it to John Hines to make the motion and to discuss it.
Well, Your Honor, I, as requested, I'm giving a report back regarding the proposed increase in the tax, Veterans Tax Exemption. As Charlie Vaughn mentioned, SB 45, Senate Bill 45, allows a new legislation that gives cities the local option to increase the veterans' credit from $100 to $500. It also increases the credit for disabled veterans from $1,400 to $2,000. And what I've done for you in your, in the report, I've provided you what those financial impacts would be depending on the levels that you would increase the exemption by. The one thing that the city staff would ask is that this exemption be, would take place for April 1st, 2004, which would be for the tax bill that would go out in October, November of 2004, or for fiscal year 2005. So that is something that we would strongly recommend. If we tried to do it retroactively, we'd have to issue over 1,200 abatements, which would be next to impossible to administer. So we would ask that this be taken care for next year. One of the other issues that came up, and I will defer to the city attorney, is that many of the council members have some, are veterans and would not be able to act on this item. And so maybe, it might be in the best interest of the city to have the city attorney review this further to see who can actually vote on the matter. But I'll defer it about at this time.
Both city council rules and state law would prohibit by creating an impermissible conflict of interest, a vote by any member of the council which resulted in a direct pecuniary benefit to that councilor. Therefore, a councilor cannot vote on an exemption which that councilor might receive so as to benefit financially from that vote. This appears that it will be a significant problem in approaching this particular matter. And if the council allows, we'll try to find a way around it.
Your Honor, just following up on that, given that this exemption wouldn't be till April of 2004, we have time. It's not like we don't have time. So what we could do is come back with an opinion from the city attorney to say, see how we can proceed. And we'll probably have to check with the Attorney General's office and just make sure that we're all set. And we can bring forward at the next meeting his report relative to that. And then the city council can act either in December or later, but prior to March of next year is probably when we'd want to have it done by.
John?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Do you want to give us some type of motion first, and then we can all discuss this?
Yes.
And you can speak to your motion.
Right. The suggested motion was to refer it to the city manager to bring about a distribution.
Did we get a second for John's motion?
I'll second, second.
All right, John, it's in your court.
Okay. So my feeling is that, given the time that we still have to make a decision by this council, and to get further input by my comrades in arms, the veterans in this city, and the totally disabled veterans, I think that we should table this issue, not move anything further till a meeting in November, when we have a better and more clear picture of who can vote on this, what the council may choose to do on this issue, recognizing the fact that we have, do have to be very careful about how we vote on this issue, because it will impact the low and moderate income property owners in this city. And I'm sure that what conversations I have had with the veteran groups, they are not anxious to get more money out of this and put a further burden on the taxpayers. So they are very considerate of that issue. So I think that before we move to do any kind of a distribution, we should further consider the issue, and we do have the time to do that. So I would move at this time to table the issue to the next meeting in November, which I believe is November 17th? Seventeenth. And if I get a second on this, I'll then relinquish the floor. I'll second the table motion.
Okay. Discussion, Harold?
Discussion on the table motion is in order?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like a legal opinion.
You're shaking your head. What's matter?
I just think you can discuss the table motion.
Two times certain.
Abba?
Yes, Your Honor, it is debatable.
It is debatable.
Two times certain.
Your Honor?
Go ahead, yes.
Thank you. I'd like a legal opinion in reference to discussing this and voting on this when it's in its draft form. It's prior to a public hearing, prior to the complete ordinance resolution that will be presented to us, only in its draft form. So, may I?
Your Honor?
Yes, go ahead.
The only vote which is prohibited is the one which has the direct pecuniary effect. So that a vote of a councilor to hold a public hearing, a vote of a councilor to take really any act with regard to this proposed ordinance, other than a proposed resolution, other than adopt it, all those other votes would be permissible.
Thank you.
Madam?
Now, the discussion, yes, Assistant Mayor?
Just so that the folks at home know the quandary that we're in, Councilor St. Lawrence is entitled to the exemption, and Councilor Whitehouse is entitled to the exemption. The mayor gets the widow's exemption. I'm entitled to the exemption. I never take it, but the city attorney tells me that because I could in the future, that I'm excluded. Councilor Grasso is excluded, and Councilor Hines is excluded. So that doesn't leave many. So that's what we've got to kind of work our way through. So we'll get to the bottom of it, and we'll get it done.
Very good. All ready for the vote?
Madam Mayor, just one other. When the report comes back, I would like to have some indication of the effect on the tax rate. I realize this is a very small amount per well-deserving veteran, but I still would like to have that number if we could.
It is there, Brad, in front of you, under his comment.
I'll define it, I'll define it better.
I mean, on the, on the rate itself, the effect of the rate.
Oh, on the rate.
Not the finance.
Okay, all right. Yes, Bill?
Your Honor, thank you. Will this be mandatory for public hearing on this?
Your Honor, yes, public hearing is required.
It will.
Yes.
Evelyn? No, didn't have you. We all ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item is a report back regarding use of credit cards for municipal payments. As you recall, on September 22nd, the city council requested report back regarding this matter. The deputy city manager provide, provided me with a report and memorandum, which I provided to the city council. What I'd like to do is, in accordance with Ted's recommendation and his memorandum, is to have the city council implement a pilot program regarding the payment of parking tickets via credit cards. And if this pilot program proves successful, we'll be reviewing the possibility of expanding to other municipal fees and fines. There are a lot of issues that are associated with it as it relates to collection of taxes. There are some court cases relative to credit card usage and how we can pass along some of those costs that are, that are associated with the use of credit cards for payment of taxes. So we'd like to study it a little bit more, but we'd like to have a pilot program to at least get ourselves online to accept credit cards for the payment of parking tickets, and also coming to the counter, being able to do that.
Did you feel that Ted should come down for questions?
I think it's pretty straightforward. The memorandum is pretty straightforward. We're going to be working it on the web page, and we're going to be, you're going to be able to do it electronically. And that's something that will be taking place in January. And we think the best way to start is something like the parking tickets.
Madam Mayor?
Do you have a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Move to authorize a city manager to proceed with a pilot program for payment of parking tickets with credit cards.
Second.
I would include in with parking tickets, city manager, the boot.
A boot?
The ability to pay for the boot.
Oh, pay for the boot, too?
That's the calls I've got when they've had trouble.
Yeah, that one could be expensive, yeah.
Sure. And just thank you, your initiated that. Okay.
Your Honor?
Councilor Whitehouse?
Yes, Your Honor, I see the communication from Deputy City Manager, Mr. Jankowski. He mentions paying by credit card municipal taxes, fees, bills, and fines. It's about a one and a half to two and a half percent service fee. But are we still talking about that one and a half and two and a half percent service fee for parking tickets, or would it be more?
No, I think what we're going to try to do is, we're going to, we're going to use what they call a convenience charge, and that's something we're going to work internally. We may or may not have to use it with parking tickets. That's something we'd probably bring to the, to the parking committee and talk about. So that's why we wanted to start with the parking tickets. It's a lot easier to deal with those. If you did the, the tax and were able to pay by credit card, it's substantially more, it has a lot more ramifications. So this would be a good one to start on, and we'll find out what works and what doesn't.
Thank you.
Councilor St. Laurent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Question for the city manager. Now, in this pilot program, so what you're saying is, if this, if we're citing losing money on the parking tickets because of the expense of the credit card, then we'll stop doing the program?
But that, that may also, we might also collect more tickets, whereas we might not in the, in the past, if people are from out of state and we're able to get them to electronically pay, we might, it could be more.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? You ready, Councilor Grasso?
Just curiosity, how do other communities address this?
In terms of what? The parking tickets? There's a whole range, depending on, I think, more outside of the state of New Hampshire. I think John Burke has been looking at that with Ted. There are larger cities that do accept the credit cards, so it's not unusual. But I think the credit cards for parking tickets is a lot easier to deal with than the issue of credit cards for payment of taxes. There's a lot less statutory issues.
All ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next one is taxes request for a poll license agreement from PS&amp;H. And this is a poll license that would be on Brigham Lane, and that's the new street, the subdivision that's up near the Bethel Assembly Church up that way. One of the things I would say is that we have been tracking the duplicate polls, and I just received a memorandum from Dave today. I've asked him every council meeting, we have one of these that show up. And we are working with them. We've been talking to them. And he says, speaking with representatives from public service, they express the same frustration that we in the city face in dealing with Verizon on such issues. Public service works with other utilities under an agreement referred to as an intercompany operational procedure. The IOP states its utility using PS&amp;H poll has 60 days to remove its wires from PS&amp;H after PS&amp;H has removed their wires. If the other utilities have not taken care of their wires within 60 days, it is the utility's responsibility to remove the poll. PS&amp;H claims that the current crop of double poles fall into this category. What we've done is, we've asked that the representative of PS&amp;H Community Service can contact us to expedite the poll removals and to keep us advised as when we're able to put a little bit more pressure on Verizon when these 60 days approaches. So we've put them on notice, and I would suggest that this move forward, but if we don't see any movement, then we might consider holding back on any poll approvals in the future. But we're tracking it every month, and obviously, they have frustrations as well as us. But we may at some point have to push them a little harder. But I wanted to bring that to the attention of the city council.
John, I'm requesting that each councilor get a copy of that memorandum, just so we can track this paperwork on polls.
Certainly, you can have, okay, not a problem.
Um, okay, yes, um.
Looking for motion? Move to approve the request of PS&amp;H for poll license agreement number six three dash four oh one, as recommended by the Public Works Department.
Discussion?
I have another poll to add, John. On Islington Street, up by the water tower, out, just out, it's outside Rick Beckstead's place on Islington Street, this is the poll there.
What about that poll that sits right out and practically in the middle of Dennis? Is that where we saw that poll? Was it Dennis?
It's a brace poll.
I'm not sure.
Boy, I don't know, but I almost, you know, ran into it. Look where you're going. I was checking my sign, David. I think it was on Dennis. I'm not sure.
Could be.
Yeah, I got to go find out where it is, because it's terrible, terrible, terrible.
Your Honor?
Okay.
Another one, aye.
Uh, did I get a second on your motion?
Yeah, why you get?
Uh, Harold?
I did finally find where Brigham Lane was, and I went up there today. There is another pole up there that's just hanging. It's a, the old pole has been replaced with a new pole over the last few months. But the base of the old pole, which is still there, has all been eaten away with either copper ants or little wiggly wigglies, and it's just hanging. I don't know what holds it up. It's only about three inches in diameter. It's unbelievable. So that we get that in the minutes. Would you describe that last, wiggly, wiggly? Like copper ants, big copper ants.
All right, we'll, we'll be working with PS&amp;H on that.
All right. All ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item deals with the request to extend the lease between the city of Portsmouth and the Players' Ring for building at 105 Marcy Street. And as was indicated earlier by Ms. Newton, President of the Players' Ring, they have done exactly what we've asked. Well, they've upgraded the electrical service, they've complied with what we needed to comply with to continue this building and viability as a theater. So we are recommending that the lease be extended from October 1st, 2003, through September 30th, 2006, pretty much in the same format that we've had previously. And the city turned. And the city attorney can answer any questions relative to the lease.
Counselor Marconi?
Uh, just want to make a motion to move, to grant the, uh, request for the building at one oh, they have one oh five Marcy Street, but I do believe the correct address is one oh one.
Okay, we'll check that.
Because there's one oh one, one oh three, and one oh five, and I believe the main entrance to the theater is one oh one.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll check it.
Thank you.
Uh, did I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Any other discussion? I would like to just stay here and now. I wish they had more time to go down and see the shows because they are wonderful. All right, we're all ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed.
The, uh, next item, Your Honor, is a, uh, request to allow the city staff to apply for a grant from Land and Water Conservation Group for improvements to the stump dump, excuse me, stump dump for, uh, uh, multi-purpose, uh, playing fields.
Madam Mayor?
Your Honor?
Uh, Counselor, uh, hi. And then Counselor Pandalakis can give the second. Yes, Counselor, hi.
Uh, we, I move that we authorize the city manager to apply for and to accept and expand a grant from the Land and Water Conservation Fund Program for the design and construction of a multi-purpose recreational field at the former stump dump. Is that the dump between the confluence of, uh, Islington Street, Greenland Road, and Middle Road?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
And, and for the public's information, the stump dump is just what it sound, it was a dump for stumps. There was no, um, municipal solid waste or any other kind of materials put in there. Uh, the only thing that we can do is fill that and put fields on it because the building couldn't go there because of the material we need.
Second. Uh, Counselor Whitehouse?
Question, Your Honor. Um, I hope our city manager moves, uh, very slowly on this. I, I feel that the entrance and the exit to this area as a recreational site would be very, very dangerous. It's a corner that everybody knows and I hope we can create a new exit or entrance to that property.
We have been working on that and, uh, the first step, if you recall, last year we identified this in the capital plan. Um, it, you know, we are applying, if we get the money, we'll continue to work like we have with Pierce Island on the various, uh, final designs. There is an opportunity to actually re, reconfigure the entryway to that location.
Do, do we have another right of way to that property other than off, uh, is?
At this time, we don't, but we possibly can.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, until we actually get some funding forward and move it forward, uh, to go forward with any other rights of way, this wouldn't make a lot of sense. The other thing you have to realize is that in the next couple of years, we're also going to be looking at, uh, the, uh, the bridge repairs, uh, over the railroad tracks and the, the extension of that project potentially up to Islington Street. And what we'd ideally like to do at that location is to, what we typically call tee off that intersection rather than having it, uh, go out towards, uh, the stump dump on an angle. Uh, so that's something we're looking at as well. So this all fits into a whole plan of that area. And so we will be coming to the council. Uh, if it, if it's not viable, if we don't get any grant money and there's no local money available, then we'll just continue to identify it in the capital plan. But certainly we need some more multi-surface fields for, uh, for soccer and lacrosse and other things.
Thank you, John.
Uh, Bill and then Joanne?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, is there another poll down there? There was, wasn't there a gun club?
The city, this, the, the gun club, it was leasing the, um, the building, uh, from the city. That lease has expired. Uh, we are not bringing it forward for renewal to the city. Uh, we're working with the, uh, the members of the gun club to, uh, try to phase that operation out.
Oh, so that is city property?
That is city property.
Uh, Counselor Grasso and then Counselor Hines?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I noticed that, um, we have till November seventh to submit this, um, application. What is, uh, the timetable for knowing when and if we get the money?
I think it's about, uh, six months, uh, Cindy? Yeah, it's about six months.
It'll be.
Yeah. We're going to continue.
Late next spring.
Right. We're going to continue to identify this in the capital plan this year. Not that, again, when you look at the capital plan, there are many things that are located in it that aren't going to have funds specifically assigned to it for this year's general fund, but could potentially for the future. But I think it's important to recognize in a capital plan, uh, the need for additional recreation fields. And it may not happen, this year might have to be another year out.
Uh, Counselor Hines?
I believe that the Harvard Street extension borders on, uh, that stump dump, uh, and the Harvard Street Wells. So there is a second way out of that area.
We'll take a look at all of those, but thank you.
Uh, any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed.
Thank you, Your Honor. The other items that are, uh, informational in nature, the canvas of the vote, uh, will be November sixth at, uh, six P M. Here in the city council chambers and then also just a memorandum from Attorney Clausen regarding the equalized valuation appeal.
Very good. Uh, any other questions, John, before we go the mayor? Um, all right, we're to the mayor and first of all, I'd like to make a motion, oh, I've been, yeah. I'd like to make a motion to accept the check from, uh, the Maple Haven Playground. And what was the amount again?
The amount was seven hundred and thirty dollars.
Seven hundred and thirty dollars.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank them very much. Yes. They're a great group and I think they're going to be really good workers. All right, now we're down to me. Appointments. Let's see. These are for consideration, uh, Taxi Commission, Peter Braziano. Consideration, Conservation Commission, Steve Miller. Consideration, Recycling, Eric Gusterson. Joanne's not correcting me, she almost said it right. Uh, Consideration, Recycling Committee, Carol Hollis. Another one for the Recycling Committee, Michael Twine. Uh, the Cemetery Committee, uh, we met and there are two new people that have stepped forward. Uh, one gentleman lives in Durham, so he will be put on as an ex officio. Uh, you know, we're having a little hard time trying to get members to volunteer here in the city on the Cemetery Committee and they're all doing such an excellent job that they need help. So I, I am putting Jeffrey Alumbad on as an ex officio and that will be coming back for a vote at our next meeting. Uh, another person on the cemetery that has stepped forward is Elizabeth A. Wright. I think that's right, isn't it? Wright, yeah. And, but she lives in Portland. Okay, we're still in consideration. The Planning Board, George C. Fagramis. And you look down the bottom of your sheet, there were sixteen meetings and out of the sixteen meetings, George missed just one. Very important to look down your sheet and get an idea of who attends the meetings and who don't. To be voted on tonight is, for the Taxi Commission is Frank Draggett.
Draggett.
Draggett. Draggett.
Your Honor?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Another Taxi Commission to be voted on, James Assely. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. And as I've told each one of you before, if you have any problems with any person that's being considered to go on to a committee in this city, all I ask is for you just to give me a call or come in and sit down and talk with me and we can start the application over. Uh, yes.
Some of these considerations, uh, it says renewal, yes or no, they're not circled, is it? In, you know, I'd like to know if they are renewable as a future process.
The, the Cemetery Committee and the Recyclings are not, you know, they're not.
Right, but I don't want to recycle them all.
Recycling and, and.
They're new.
They're new. They're, they're doing their committee. Okay.
All right, now we're down to the Veterans Day Service. I received a letter from, uh, uh, Cal B. Walton and, uh, this is what he said. Dear Maeserell and Members of the City Council, the honor of your participation in the Veterans Day Services on Tuesday, November eleventh, is requested by the Members of the Central, Central Veterans Council. We will step off at ten thirty A M. from the VFW and proceed up Maplewood in, into Islington and into Goodwin Park. We would be honored to have you, Maeserell, to bring the greeting from the city and your own personal message. If any other member of the council members would like to speak during the ceremony, please let me know. Now you know we've got some veterans sitting here, so if anybody wants to speak, just let me know. Uh, God bless you. We have a Halloween parade coming up, October thirty-first at six thirty P M. You're all welcome, but just make sure you dress yourself in a costume. Are you, are you going to do your hair? Lady Tiscus.
Madam Mayor, I think we have the Goodwin Park, uh, tomorrow.
Uh, we have the Goodwin Park tomorrow, yes, we do. And that's at, uh, four o'clock at the Goodwin Park, it's on the monument. And, uh, it's, there's going to be quite a group there and, uh, so, uh, hopefully you'll all be able to come. Yes, Counselor Marconi?
Can we have any kind of a time as to when we're going to do the Fitz John Porter statue?
Counselor, um, as you're aware.
While I'm still around?
You know, we will get that done and you will get my personal invitation when we redo it. Uh, we have money put in the, uh, capital plan and we are seeking other grant funds.
Thank you.
And Emmy, you'll be the one to cut the ribbon on that one. No question. All right, we're down to miscellaneous and other business. Oh, listen, look at this. Uh, Counselor Pandalakis and then Counselor Whitehouse.
I, I would just like to say to John Vohinko and the staff that did all the work on the Dennis Street. It's a beautiful street and I know I gave him a very hard time at times, but it looks beautiful. Thank you.
Thanks.
You checked out water and seen it gone, Dennis. I know it someplace. Uh, Harold?
Yes, Your Honor, I wish this came under your reports and that is a communication from Captain, um, Montgomery of the U, U S Coast Guard and I think it's a very short letter and he's thanking us for going over there and, uh, receiving the two Coast Guard cutters, the Tacoma and the Campbell. Would you please read that? Very important, I think.
Uh, yeah.
I'll read it for you, Your Honor. Dear Mayor Searle, on behalf of Coast Guard Integrated Support Command Boston, I extend my appreciation for your participation at the change of home port ceremony for cutters Tacoma and Campbell at the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard in Kittery, Maine on September twenty-seventh. Your involvement greatly contributed to this memorable event. Thank you for your interest in and your support of U S Coast Guard crews and their families. Sincerely, uh, T P Montgomery, Captain, U S Coast Guard, Commanding Officer, Integrated Support Command Boston.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mayor.
And it was a wonderful ceremony. Exactly all just saluted when we went on the camp house.
You liked that, didn't you?
But I couldn't quite crawl up to the Tacoma because the tide was in and.
The gangway was straight up.
Yeah, boy, was that high. Uh, any other, um, miscellaneous?
Move adjourned?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed.
Well, I, I would.